Hi, everybody. I will call the Simsbury Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting to order. It's been a while since we've met, so welcome to all the new faces, including staff. So, thank you all for being here. I'm Katie Martin, and I'm the Chair of the ZBA. And this is new for all of us, so bear with us if you can. Tom, do you want to go around? Is that what you were thinking? For everybody to just do a quick introduction?
I don't think it would hurt.
Okay, so I've been on the ZBA for almost like 18 years, which is hard to imagine. And I've been Chair for probably eight or nine. Time flies, and I appreciate all of you giving of your time and your service to the town of Simsbury.
Steven, would you like to speak up and just give a little quick?
Sure, I'm Steve Antonio. I've been on the ZBA for a number of years that I won't disclose, but less than Katie. And it's a pleasure to serve the town.
Josh, anything?
I'm Josh Michelson. I'm newly elected member as of this last November. This is my second meeting now, so looking towards the more experienced people to lead us there.
Allison?
Hi, I'm Ally. It's my first meeting for the zoning board. I was elected in November. Previously, I was on the recycling committee for a few years. So, I definitely love serving in Simsbury.
Hi, everyone. Mark Freeman, newly elected as of today, so excited to be here.
I'm Tom Hazel. I am the, almost 120 days in, as the zoning enforcement officer for the town of Simsbury. And I come from a background of being the environmental planner in Windsor, and also the housing code compliance officer for the town of Wyndham in Royal Mary. I look forward to working with you guys. And I guess unless I know who Danny Cupit is, I would say we can move on.
And Laura, do you want to just introduce yourself real quick? Maybe, maybe not.
Yep, I'm sorry. I had to unmute myself. Laura Barkowski, I'm the land use specialist. So, I'm just kind of doing tech support for you guys tonight. But you get all the emails from me.
And we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we are.
Yes, you are.
Great.
We have the video off, I guess. This is new for us.
Okay, so we don't have a secretary. Tom Haran, who served our town for many, many years. And Tom and Laura, if there'd be some way that we could send him a thank you appreciation to the town. We never got to that. We were hoping to do that at the beginning of the year, but I think that would be well deserved. We don't have a secretary, and I don't know that I have like a formal roll call that came with the attachments, but I can go ahead and read in the applications if that's all right?
I think that would be appropriate.
Is that okay? So normally, we would have like the regular call that would go in the minutes?
We see Steven, Josh, Ally, and Mark, and Katie. I believe that that makes a quorum. I think we're good there.
Great. Okay, so I think on another night, we will appoint a secretary, who would then read in the roll call and would sign off on variances. But I'll go ahead and call to order. And we have application number 20-01 of Dan Morgan, with Morgan Contracting Incorporated applicant, First National Trust Company Corporate Trustee Owner for a variance to Article 8, Section A of the Simsbury zoning regulations to allow 45 feet in lieu of the 50 feet front yard setbacks, and a variance of Article 7B, dot 7, dot C, dot B of 160 feet and 7% in excess of the 600 square foot and 25% of gross square footage to construct an accessory apartment at the property located at 6 Hamilton Lane, assessor's map F-18, block 201, lot 007, zone R-40. And application number 20-02, Tallwood Hollow LLC, care of Jeremy Barrow, applicant-owner to appeal decision of zoning official concerning the cease and desist order dated March 30, 2020, at the property located at 82 Climax Road, assessor's map 020, block 608, lot 044, zone R-40. Let's see if I can do this from memory. At this hearing, interested parties will be heard. And usually, we have this written out. All of this is on file with the town assessor. And it gives the address for the town. So, I'm a little rusty on reading those by rote memory, because usually, we have it in front of us.
I think we're pretty safe on the fact that they've been read into the record and that you are on the record that it will be filed and everything else.
Great.
The only guidance I can give the commission due to the new guidances is that any rendering of a decision that you read into the record, the hardship on an approval or the lack of a hardship on a nonapproval, that's all that the town requests, but make sure that that gets on the record.
Okay, okay. We have a quorum, but we also, can we appoint Ally to serve as a regular member so she can vote?
If she's an alternate, you can appoint her to sit.
Great. If you're comfortable with that, Ally, I'll ask for you to serve as a regular member so that you can join us in voting?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I believe all your paperwork's been filed and everything else?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Yep.
Great. Okay, so first on our docket is application 20-01 of Dan Morgan, who would like to present? And what we normally do when we're sitting in Town Hall is we ask people to come up. You introduce yourself so that we have it all for the record. Now, we're videotaping, so we're all famous, so this is all going to go in posterity. But if, Dan, if you want to start, and then just describe the application and the hardship and what you're applying for.
Okay, thank you. Dan Morgan, Morgan Contracting, representing Jeff and Dawn Smith for this in-law apartment that we would like to build onto their, to Stacy and Brett Smith's house there on 6 Hamilton Lane. I designed it, the house, the garage section of the house is a salt box style. So, I needed to, I wanted to make it look the same in that section. So, the, and the salt, I'm sure you guys know, salt box, the front is steeper than the back. And in order to, we want to put the same shingles on the roof as the existing house. I need to, the hardship is that by trying to stay inside the existing footprint, the setback requirements, the pitch of the back would be so shallow that I couldn't put shingles on it to match the existing house. And it just makes the addition very narrow. And it then pushes it into the, into the side setback also. But the, I did a, as you probably have, is a rendering of the after, with the addition on, showing the addition to the left of the garage. It has the same style as the existing house. So, it was important to everybody that I do that. So, I intentionally built it that way, which pushes it forward of the setback requirement. And also makes it over the 600 square foot limit. And it's difficult to try to put enough in a 600 square foot addition. It's tough to try to fit a livable space in that. So, we, I increased it to try to make everything work and make it work for the owners also. So, I did what you see, and I think it's probably the best way that I could make this addition function the way it needs to.
So hopefully, can you guys see the screen with the renderings?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
Okay, so Dan, can you just walk us through this a little bit? So, this is Exhibit 5 here.
Right. Can, will I be able to take the mouse?
No, but I'm happy to.
All right, so, okay, so the existing end of the house is the edge of the garage. And yes, there should be a rendering of before, of what the house looks like before. That's it there.
This is before.
Right, that's existing. That's what it looks like now.
And then the addition is going over here?
Right, right.
Okay.
Exactly. And we looked at trying to put it on different, the other side of the house, but the septic is over there, and the, the septic is very old there. And we're looking to put a new septic in for the house also. And the space to the right of that house is where the septic is.
Over here.
Right. We really don't want to infringe on that septic field area. So, the only really logical spot was where I put it there. And you can see it highlighted in green. And you can see it just encroaches on the front setback there a little. It hits it obliquely. And we had a survey done, so it's all staked out where you could see where the arc of the addition would be versus where the setback is. So, it's like a sliver.
And this might be, is Tom still on?
I'm back on.
Great. The reason that this is not just a standard addition, but is considered an accessory apartment is because, is there no access through the garage?
Correct. It would have to be separated from the house in there. Even if there was a car access to the garage, it's still separated from the house by the garage. And in doing a field observation with the designer and the family, there are some restrictions, as he stated with the septic, and some handicap access to the house due to the homeowner's needs. But in all, yeah, that would be a separate in-law apartment under the regs. It does step over some of the square footage regulation. And that's secondary.
So, Dan, what else would you like to tell us about that?
So, I put a letter together for this addition, and I went to all of the neighbors that are in that circle, and which it shows there. It talks about the size of the addition, the 760, which, and it says it's over the town allowance of the 600. It also encroaches on the front setback. And that I was going to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I notified the neighbors that if they were agreeable to it, if they would sign off that they were okay with it. I told them that if they didn't, I noted in the letter that the ZBA puts a lot of weight on whether the neighbors like it or not, or in favor of it or not. So, I wanted to, I didn't want, I wanted to give them everything to, so that they weren't surprised by anything. So, I tried to be as complete as to what we were trying to do. And I went to all the houses on that circle, and they all were okay with doing it and signed the letters, which I submitted.
Yeah, that's, we appreciate that. It is nice. Now, typically, we would read this into the record because we would be audiotaping this. Tom, are you comfortable that we have these here as part of the, or would you like me to read them in?
I believe that they'll be part of the permanent record due to the writing. As far as audio, I believe Dan explained it well enough that your understanding of why these letters were submitted and why they're signed.
Great. So, we've got these all from the various neighbors, which is nice. That's certainly one consideration, I would say, you know, we, and just for, for those of you who are new to the ZBA, you know, we take into consideration a number of factors. Most importantly, the hardship of, you know, why is this property presenting a hardship for the owner to strictly adhere to the zoning regulations? So, obviously, if there are neighbors that are upset about it, that plays into part of our decision making. All right, I think I'm going to stop sharing. Is everybody okay with the, so I do have all these in your packet? Great, then we can see each other again. Anything else, Dan, that you want to mention?
That's all I can think of right now.
So, would you classify some of the, you know, can you just go through the hardship again? Because, you know, unfortunately, like just the beauty of it, the aesthetics of it are not necessarily a hardship per se. I heard you talk about the septic system, you know, where there's not another logical place to put the addition. Safety plays a big role in, you know, making sure that, you know, we take safety into consideration in any kind of new addition. Can you just speak to those a little bit?
So, the, well, we wanted it to be one story. Just really was trying to conform to make it look like it was in the right architectural design for that property. And the pitch of the roof, I wanted to make sure that, to try to put a commercial product on the back of the roof in order to make it flatter, you know, to get it waterproof with a flatter pitch, I think would be very unsightly. And I'm sure that the neighbors would not like the look of a rubber, you know, a rubber membrane. So, the, and we're just trying to fit a livable space, and it just needed to be a little wider versus a long, narrow to make it, you know, work properly and, you know, function as an in-law apartment.
How about for the owners? Do you, do you want to speak to the application at all? Do you want to introduce yourselves and describe your application?
I'm not exactly sure what to say, except my, you know, we're looking to downsize, and my son and daughter-in-law have, you know, had a baby a couple of months ago. And he, my son is a quadriplegic in a wheelchair, and he's just asked us to, you know, live closer to him to help them out with the baby. So, we're more than willing to do that.
That's lovely. How about for other, other members? This is usually, you know, it's just an opportunity to ask questions. And, you know, feel free to like just ask about the property, the application itself. Steven, you're my other veteran here.
And if any of you would like any town input, I have visited the site, so I can speak specifically to the other side of the house if you would like. But I'm your eyes and ears, so just let me.
Yeah.
Okay. You seem to have really encompassed searching alternatives to the hardship, which is important to us. And I understand the pitch of the roof is very important as well. I do have one quick question. It's more aesthetic. The siding on your proposal shows the T-111 being switched to actual siding. And how is it going to be blended in with the existing structure to, you know, provide a seamless approach?
There, I don't have, I'm confused. I don't have any T-111. I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
There was a picture in our packet, an actual photograph. And I don't, let me see if I can bring the packet up. It doesn't matter. Is it going to be matching siding?
Yes, yes.
Question.
Right, and they're going to be reciding the whole house. So, the siding that we're putting on the, we've already replaced the siding on the back of the house when we put in, we did a lot of work on the existing house. And we put new siding on, so, on the back of the house. And so, when we do the addition, we're going to be matching that and then doing the rest of the house as soon as they can. So, they're going to be replacing the roof on the whole house and then siding the, in the house. But the siding that we're going to be putting on will be the same on the whole house.
Great. That was a, it's more aesthetic concern than the hardship, which is obviously our main concern here. I don't really have any other questions. Should we, does anyone else?
How about for Tom, if you can speak to the property having been there, if you're able to? Oh, he's awesome. Ally, Josh, Mark, do you guys have thoughts, questions?
I have a question. The addition, is it going to, do you have to take down any trees or anything? Or is that just like, there's just grass that you're going to build on after or next to the garage?
There's a, there's an old apple tree, or maybe a crabapple tree. There's one small, no, no big trees have to come down. But the spot is fairly clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and the other part of the hardship is that there is a buried gas tank in the backyard, a propane tank, that we were trying to stay away from.
And Tom, would you mind speaking about the property and how the application fits from your real-world experience being out there? Oh, looks like he's maybe frozen. We'll wait.
Certainly, and I apologize for my internet connection. I've been having trouble.
It's okay. We've all been there.
I actually have another question while we're waiting, if you don't mind. Just to further reinforce your case for a hardship, it appears you really sort of need this addition put on this side for handicap accessibility. Is that correct?
It's designed to be, yes. The short answer is yes.
Okay, are you going to put a ramp there? Because obviously, we see a little stoop at this point.
Well, we'll just work the grade to be able to get in. And we won't build a ramp.
And Brett, Brett can get up a step with his wheelchair.
Just trying to reinforce the hardship, you know, finding the hardship is part of what we're looking to do here.
Right.
Right, well, a walkway will end up, you know, like a patio walkway or the asphalt. When the driveway needs to be replaced, because the septic tank is partially under the driveway and it should not be, the whole driveway is going to come out. And then we'll grade to, the house is on a slab. The existing house is on a slab, and the addition would be on a slab also. So, we would make it so that it's, there's not a step there. But we would just bring the walkway up to that so that access and accessibility would work fine with a wheelchair.
So, I think, kind of like Steve was mentioning, it looks like you've explored a lot of other options to be able to have the best use of your property and that having the septic system and the gas tank on various other, you know, conceivable areas were not feasible. So, that this is really the main location where you could put it.
Right. We looked at it to try to work it from all the angles that we could. And we felt that this was the best for all the different factors that we just explained.
And in terms of the square footage, I don't know if you worked with the town to explore different options of not needing quite so much square foot. I mean, it's not a lot of extra footage.
I, I don't, the size of it, the square footage is really necessary just to have enough room. We need wider doorways for accessibility. And it requires cabinets to have openings up underneath them to get in to. It was just, and even to be able to put furniture in and that you could fit around, that's what we came up with, that. I think they would like it to actually be bigger than that. But I was, you know, I'm trying to walk the line of making it workable for them, but not excessive for, you know, zoning requirements.
We appreciate that.
I just want to let Katie know that I've logged in by phone because I'm having internet issues.
Yeah.
So, if you'd like me to speak to the, to the layout of the land, I can do that for you.
That would be great.
In coming into the cul-de-sac, it's a fairly flat lot. And in reviewing what they have done for access issues and handicap issues, the right side of the house would be more towards the living quarters of the home. And there's a handicap ramp to give the homeowner access to the house on the right side of the house. And the layout of the septic is over in that area. If they were to find a reserve in that area, it would probably continue on the right side of the house. So, in talking with Mr. Morgan about design to the rear or to the left, because of that propane tank and other issues, we did find that the left would be a little bit more accommodating. But I did steer him to the ZBA for a variance in that regard. And outside of that, that's what I pretty much observed on the ground. Is that suffice?
Yeah, that's helpful. Yeah. Any other questions from members? Okay. Dan, anything else that you want to add?
I don't think so.
Okay, so, and Tom, how about for you? Anything else that you want to add about the application?
No, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary as far as his design is concerned. I think he tried to squeeze it in as tight as I could see.
Yeah, okay. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the hearing closed. And then what we're going to do at this point is the applicants can stay here and listen to us deliberate. We'll go through, and what we'll do is I'll ask for a motion. The motion always has to be in the affirmative. And then we will, we'll make a motion, and then we'll deliberate that, and then we'll vote. Okay, so, once the hearings close, which I just closed it now, the applicants can no longer voice their opinion, so they're, they can mute themselves, literally.
Okay.
So, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll do it if that's okay.
That would be awesome.
I'll make a motion to approve application 20-01 of Dan Morgan, Morgan Contracting Incorporated applicant, First National Trust Company Corporate Trustee Owner for a variance to Article 8, Section A of the Simsbury zoning regulations to allow 45 feet in lieu of 50 feet front yard setback, and a variance of Articles 7B, 7CB of 160 feet and 7% in excess of the 600 square foot and 25% of gross square footage of the construct of an accessory apartment at the property located at 6 Hamilton Lane. at the property located at 6 Hamilton Lane.
And I think what, typically what we would do is we would be granting a variance of, here it would be five feet from the front yard setback. I think that's probably technically like how we'd want to phrase that. Tom, do you have any issue with that?
That would be the first variance. The second variance would be the excess of the 600 square feet for an in-law apartment.
Yeah. So, you know, I think just to be clear, we would be, we would be granting a five-foot variance from the front yard setback and a 25% from the gross square footage.
It looks like, yeah, 7% increase.
7% increase and 25% square footage. Okay.
Do you want to change the motion or just let those corrections stand?
I think we can work those in. And then can I, can I get a second for that motion? So we're not doing a formal vote, but we need someone to second the motion so we can deliberate.
Anyone. Get your name in the records.
Yay. So Ally seconded the motion. Thank you. Now we can talk about it. So, you know, I appreciate that it looks like the applicants have tried a number of different alternatives, trying to keep it. They could have put on a much larger addition. They're asking for basically a five-foot addition from the setback. I appreciate the fact that they reached out to all of the neighbors to, you know, let them know exactly what they're doing so they can, you know, be aware of it. You know, it seems like the hardship of no other logical location and also some of the safety issues with handicap accessibility are meaningful. Other thoughts?
I agree. It seems like they've really researched all the alternatives. There is a distinct hardship. I don't see it fitting, especially with the septic system considerations on the alternate side. That's sort of the, the final, finalizing component to me, that this is a hardship and it's valid.
I agree with Stephen. And also because they mentioned the gas tank in the back, so they can't build back, which is an issue for them as well, hardship.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Everybody ready to vote? Okay. So we have a motion to approve the application. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Anyone opposed? Abstained? I think we've got them all. Okay. So the motion, the motion is approved. And typically then the town will go through and formalize this. I think you need to wait typically like 15 days to have any, anyone who wants to appeal it or counter it. But you can work with the town and it's our first motion approved in 2020.
Yay. Sorry. I'll mute myself again.
Oh, Tom, you're muted.
Laura and I will keep the applicants up to date on the process and we'll get them through that.
Great. Okay. So I think, oh, Dan, you're muted too. Uh, Dan, you're muted.
Can you, okay. There was a side yard part component to this, you know, setback. There was two, there were two fees, one for the front and one for the side. Because it was like a foot over in that one corner. So, and I, it was, it was only when you closed it out that I remembered that one part. There, there's really two applications for the setback. The side, it clips that, that side corner just a little bit.
Dan, Dan, as far as your rendering is concerned, your side lot to the, from what I'm looking at here, to the north is perfectly fine.
Okay.
Just the front yard and your square footage.
Okay.
Your rendering shows and measures out exact. Your application was for your front yard and your increase over the 600 square feet. You should be perfectly fine with your rendering.
Okay. Well, they, they sent.
We can review that. But there is no side yard encroachment shown.
Okay.
Yeah. And usually what we do with any of these, the motions, it's with all of the accompanying materials and it's, you know, as presented to us and.
Right. No, I get it. I get it. Yes. Yeah. Okay. Good. Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, ZBA members, let's stay on. We've got a couple other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, application 20-02 has requested a continuance?
The attorney for Jeremy Verrell has formally asked for a continuance. So I request that we open the meeting and table it until June.
Okay. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we open application 20-02, but immediately table it to our meeting in June.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. So moved. Next on the agenda is general commission business.
Do you have something to say? I just want to make the commission aware. I know that you haven't met in a while and I am new to you as you are some new to the commission. But there will be, due to COVID-19, many applications coming down over the next 60 to 90 days in regards to pools. Pools especially on corner lots. So I would make you aware that there are some things that you may want to review and refresh yourself on if you feel the need. Mainly, oh, my pages have changed. Here I am being discombobulating. Mainly, off the top of my head, I'll just fly with it. Noticing in Article 4 definitions, side yards, front yards, rear yards, and setbacks for those accompanying yards, especially corner lots. There's diagrams and definitions about that. And then under Article 8, Section A goes over the zoning and the required setbacks. And then in Article 8, Section B or C 12, I think, it goes over pools. There's an alleviation of setback distances in the rear plane of the house from the property line. R-15s are 10 feet. Any other zone is 25 feet for a pool. Just bear these details in mind with applications that will be coming up because there's been a slew of requests and there are applications rolling in about pools that just don't fit, especially corner lots.
Yeah. Because with the corner lot, you basically have, instead of front, rear, side, side, you have typically two frontage setbacks. So the, it's, it's harder to, to fit it in. And a lot of people, you know, when you buy your house, you don't know these things. Typically, people aren't experts in zoning.
I have many, many issues where people literally have a five or six-foot sliver of land that runs 20 feet long to put a pool in. There's some technicalities that'll be coming up. And just, it's a refresher just so that you could understand. And I'm here to assist at any point.
That's awesome. Yeah. Just while we have time, like, I think, I've always enjoyed being part of the ZBA because it's, it's bipartisan. Like, all of us are here to just help our town and try to keep the character of the town so that we don't have, you know, lots of people building all over their property and all of a sudden, you know, you, you're infringing on everybody else's yard while at the same time giving leeway when there are hardships so that people can take advantage and use their property in reasonable ways. So I think we try to do our best to limit the amount of variance that we allow, taking into consideration, you know, the stuff that we talked about tonight. And then also, just sometimes it's topography, that there's no other place on the lot that makes it unique compared to other places that create a hardship. We do our best, like, we're all, you know, you take into consideration what they're asking for, what's reasonable, what do the neighbors think, what is the hardship? And, you know, we deliberate and do our best.
We also occasionally recommend alternatives that perhaps someone has not thought of. It's not always black and white where it's a yes or no. We can meet them partially and agree to some components, but seek out other things that don't seem really a hardship. That's the key thing I've always been told, is you have to find the hardship. That's really our burden.
Yep.
And I'd like to just state that as the liaison for the town, I'm trying to preempt a lot of this before it gets to you. So I try to discuss these issues with, with the applicants prior to it coming here so that they're educated to what is appropriate and what isn't appropriate. And I try to guide them as much as I possibly can to take some of the burden off of frivolous applications, I would say.
Yeah. That's great.
Tom, traditionally, the new liaison gives us cookies.
Well, maybe in a couple of months. We'll talk.
That's true. Keep your cookies.
Any other general comments from you, Tom or Laura?
I think I'm.
Okay.
I got, I got one quick question, Katie. What about signing off without a secretary? Do we still sign documents like we used to? Remember how the secretary always had to sign?
Right. And when, when should we vote for a secretary? Yeah.
I would say I could look into that as far as election of officials is concerned and where the ordinance puts that. And if we have an ability to do that in the meantime. And then also signing of documents for permanent records is one thing. But approval of things is statutorily an approval. So whether it's signed or not is not always necessary. So we're good for now. I will talk to Mike about that and see, see where we stand. I'll make note of that.
Yeah. Because if I need to come into town and sign something, that's fine. We want to make sure. No? Okay.
We will be hopefully opening soon to appointment only. Everything else, we'll try to work out the best we can.
Yeah. Great. So we've got minutes from our last meeting about five months ago in December. If you guys have had a chance to look at the minutes, can I get a motion?
Ah, since, I think it was just us there, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December 18th, 2019 as they are.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Josh. Nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Anyone opposed? Okay. Typically, this is the best part, is somebody gets to make a motion to adjourn our meeting. That's the easy one. So maybe a newbie, you can make a motion if you so choose to adjourn our meeting tonight.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Hey.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.